These meetings are recorded. I'll take a motion on the previous minutes. Motion by John, seconded by Lena. Any further discussion, hearing not. Three in favor, one abstention. Joe was not present. We have an 81 P for 34 Asylum Street, Vineyard Point Ventures.
All right, Bill House and Ray Grant.
We have a check in the amount of 350.
I'll look on with John.
Good, sir.
Okay. Existing property going for asylum street. Current, it was two lots that got bought by one owner and has been re-divided. Required a variance because the lot was short on area and frontage. The variance was granted in November, I believe.
I think we had before.
Yeah, I believe that they had come for another variance because something to do with the lot configuration wasn't accurate or something to that. I don't recall specifically.
We had worked on playing under this and went out and did our survey work. It was about 10 feet short, so it was short in area.
There you go.
Oh, all right.
All right.
After the survey.
This one is endorseable as submitted.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thanks.
No, this one's good.
Huh?
This one's fine.
All right.
Motion, motion by Joe, seconded by John. I'll, any further discussion, hearing not. All in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Larry will sign it for you. Now, that brings us into the continued public hearing for both 701 and 702. The application of FND Central Realty Corp. for a special permit to construct Bear Hill Village Plan Residential Development. And the continued public hearing for the application of FND Realty, Central Realty Corp. for approval of Bear Hill Village definitive plan. Thank you.
So, we continue to try to progress in this development, getting closer to a plan that can be signed by those commissioners, by the board. One of the, the new things were what is, I have added, I've added bus stops. Because we can call it the Zane circle effect, Zane circle, you know, rule now. Because we've had, we added interior sidewalks along these areas on one of the last iterations, and now.
The interior sidewalks are throughout, right?
Throughout, yeah, one sidewalk all through here, up through here, all through here, and through here, and through here. So, there's interior sidewalks everywhere.
No, I remember that, I know that on Casey itself.
It almost looks like.
So, um, so I've kind of positioned these to take care of the certain clusters, so that I've shown a sidewalk, a bus stop here on the north side of Casey, along the Casey Drive side, you know, sidewalk. This sidewalk comes along, comes in here. This sidewalk comes across.
You also erect signs for children crossing now, or something to that degree?
Yeah.
You know, I'm not a big proponent of signs, per se, but regrettably because of only having a sidewalk on one side, and obviously that we know that they're gonna have to cross to get to some sort of bus stand, if you will, a bus drop off.
Right, right. Sure. Really, right now, this is the only area here that has to cross. This one here is all, the sidewalk is on that side, on the street, so these don't have to cross, and these don't have to cross.
That one, the first one, doesn't have to cross over?
So, this one here, there's a sidewalk along here.
Okay.
The sidewalk runs along the entire outside, so, I mean.
So, that one's fine.
They'll go across, you know, and just be there. So, just, it's really just these, uh, two, four, six, eight, 10, 10 units, 10 buildings here that would have to cross over here, but we can add, we can add signage.
What about the very first one? The bus stop is someplace else?
So, for this area here, well, I'm looking at it and thinking that, you know, the ones that are closest to Casey could come across, they'd have to cross and go here to this one.
Yeah.
And then in this one here, I'm showing one on Beaver Street, right here.
Okay.
The sidewalk here. So, right, so what happens is, you got like, you got like 54 units that would have access to this one. 47 units would have access to this one, and 45 units would have access to this bus stop here. They're all pretty much, you know, and it gives them, everybody access on a public way to get the bus.
Yep, okay.
Some of the other things we looked at was, Larry wanted to, you know, what you have in your packet is, these are kind of the breakouts, breakup of the open space. And there is a, um, we have, we have, basically, right now, there are five open space parcels. There's this one here, which is a rather large parcel. There's, this is one, there's a, there's a smaller one in here, which is adjacent to the, the public way. Then you have this, this really large one here, another one here, and another one that's up in the middle, it doesn't make, um, it, it, it could be a playground or something, you know, for, for, or, or, or just, you know, a little.
I can't understand.
Ball, whatever.
I'm not really, I can't hear you, Bob.
Right. So.
Well, no, you, you.
I know.
You're kind of withdrawing a bunch of mumbling sounds.
So, this is, um, so these are basically your, your, your large common open space areas here, and there's another one here running along Beaver Street. Then there are two smaller ones. There's one here, and one up in here. And on those areas there, they could be utilized as, as passive recreation areas, such as, you know, little, little parks, or, you know.
Is that what your plan is?
Walking trails. Probably something like that, yes.
Well, that's.
Yeah, for their own development. It's for their own development, it's on.
You're not planning on doing anything in there, is?
Correct, yeah, right, 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 right.
So, I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking at the one at the end of the cul-de-sac and saying, why would the town want that?
This one here?
Yeah. I mean, do you need to give that to the town for any reason?
I think we need to, well, we would have to find other areas to, um.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that you know.
I don't know why.
I mean, I guess they don't, I guess they don't.
Private, why would you?
My, my take on this, and Bob and I had had a couple conversations over, over the years, as it turns out, on, on what to do with it, or how to manage the various parcels, or how they should be configured. And my take has always been, if you've got large contiguous areas where you have basically environmental corridors, then those are more significant areas that, that warrant protection under Concom jurisdiction. So, certainly, the two large ones.
Yeah, I had no question with those.
You know, this one would be one, this one would be two.
Yeah, the one along, and the one along Beaver Street, I really don't mind either, to be totally honest.
The yellow, I don't have a problem with.
Yeah.
These are useless.
But I don't see why I would go with this or this.
No.
So, if we had three, in fact, can I write on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would number this one, because it's the most significant, this two, because it's next in line, and this is three, because it's obviously smaller. The original plan had said there were five, and the documentation was talking about five parcels, but that's back when there was another street in here that created.
Two separate parcels.
And that's why there are five. I think we only want three, the three big ones, and that simplifies all of it from Bob's standpoint as well, because there are fewer things to define and resurvey and all that stuff. So, that'd be my suggestion.
Yeah, I agree, I don't.
Okay. And then, other issues that Larry has asked, you know, he's been talking about is to, you know, show something regarding the improvements to the, to the ball fields.
What ball field is that, Bob?
These are the, um, Donna Rosenfeld, at the Plains Park, Rosenfeld Park.
Oh, yeah, okay.
The two of Rosenfeld.
So, so what, so as part of Dominic's proposal, you can see what he's, and this one, particular one here, you can just barely see it, but there's a, there's a dugout here, and a dugout here, so it's gonna be rebuilt. All these, all this lighting is gonna be redone, and all this fencing around, around the perimeter of the ball fields is all gonna be replaced with new. That's, that's the Rosenfeld field, and this is the other field. Here, you can see the same thing, there's a dugout here, there's a little dugout here, and there's, there's a little fencing around, and there's, then there's these light poles that are all gonna be, gonna be worked on.
My suggestion was, and I keep referring it to, when Bob and I talk, I keep referring to a site plan for the improvements, and I'm not sure that's probably the best way to describe it, but generally speaking, what I was assuming you would want to see is somewhat of a site plan in terms of a line drawing to scale that shows where all those pieces are together. And in terms of putting a graphic together, do an aerial photo on one half of a 24 by 36 page that, you know, is a clear aerial, probably our Mass Ortho 2015 aerial photo. So, it's an aerial view, straight down on it, shows everything, and then right beside it would be line work that you could literally lift from that aerial and show somewhat of a site plan based on lifting line work from the aerial photo. And the line work side of the map, you'd be able to identify each item that Bob had gone through and itemized in their cost estimates for the refurbishing or the replacement. That way, we'd have one document, everything on it, and the decision that, since you've got the draft for, could make reference to that plan, the same way we make reference to the plan Bob put together for the Beaver Street improvements. So, to me, that would make the most sense, and it'd be the easiest to track.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, I, I went through all our files, I, I couldn't believe that over the years, we never did anything down there at Plains Park for Rosenfeld, you know, in, in general, an as-built conditions plan or anything, and we had nothing, so. I have reached out to Paul Brazza to see if he knows if there's any kind of a layout plan that shows anything that's existing, but.
Let's do ourselves a favor, though, let's not wait for our.
No, 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 no.
You're reaching out, if you haven't received a response, you know what your response is. Just being honest.
I checked in our files, and I couldn't find.
You know, it's not really surprising to me. I'm sure you don't have much on Fino either, to be frank with you.
Well, for the, for the type of work that he's doing, I mean, I don't know that we need a survey plan, or you can take on just the aerial, and then create your base plan from that aerial, and just indicate, you know, the lights, and that way, we have a number for the total number of lights. You can show where the dugouts are, that type of stuff can just go on the plan. I don't, I don't think we need to have, have you go out and survey it.
Right.
No, no. Doesn't have to be detailed. That was what I'd suggested, we just wanted to clarify.
Right.
So, it has to be overly detailed.
That's fine. So, that's, um, that's pretty much where we stand as of tonight. We've, uh, we've, we've made the extension to 16, so we could continue to resolve some issues. Mike's not, I see Mike's not here tonight, so I don't know if he's got any other.
All right. Like, streetlights?
Streetlights. So, the other issue was streetlights as to whether or not the, the board wanted to do, wanted to see streetlights on the project.
They'd be internal. They wouldn't be along Casey Drive. These would be internal to the development.
Generally, generally, I think what we did over Beaver Pond Common was, we just showed, like, the, the, the light by the road in front of each unit, like a little lantern-type thing, that was, you know, that was not really, not really showed any streetlights.
Is there a light going into the side of the road, where it's such a dangerous area?
Well, Joe, yeah, I mean, I mean, probably not, no. I don't know if there's one across the street at Maple Street or not. Um, I haven't really noticed.
We think something would go there.
That would actually, street, streetlights on Casey in that intersection would go to the selectmen, correct, Larry?
Yep.
So, I mean, they, they should comment on whether they want streetlights at that location, because that's a town bill, not ours.
Right.
Uh, I mean, I, you know, that seems like a location that we would, and I'm not sure if, if they want to put any lights along Casey at all. Inside, I don't think we've asked in, in other locations.
We haven't for any of the PRDs.
Yeah.
No, I was just, I was just making the suggestion, in case the developer was thinking of doing them, it would be preferable to get them on the plan, so there isn't confusion later on, but it's not a requirement.
You know, yeah. I mean, if he was, if he was doing them, yeah, I would like to see him, but if he's not, I don't know that we would.
No, he's probably not who you want to do. They'd end up being in people's front yards, because there's, you know, because of the, you know, the roadway, everything.
But each house will have its own.
Oh, each house will have its own, like.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
So-called.
Which light, and many of them will have an actual post, lamp post, out by the, you know, at the end, by the end of their driveway, type thing.
Okay.
We're closing in on it.
Crazy.
It's cool.
We have a, great job.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking, in terms of Bob going forward, is, is that, you know, we, I, I think we sort of said, but I don't know if we want to vote on it, that I would only want the town to accept parcels one, two, and three, as shown, as Larry indicated on the maps, so that way, he has that officially, because I don't, I don't really think the others are.
I don't think the other ones are relevant.
For the, for the, for the open space?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I mean, that, that's me, so I'm, I'm not sure that the rest of the board feels that way, that's what I'm saying.
If there's a consensus, then that's, yeah, well, I wouldn't have a formal vote on that.
I didn't hear what you said, Joe.
The consensus would be, Lena.
Yeah.
That he has on, shown on the plan, five or six, if you.
Five.
Five, okay. Five designated open space areas, with Joe's contention is only being three, the large green.
Yep.
The large, I'm gonna call it pink.
Yep.
And then, the yellow, which is the side of Beaver Street.
That's the sewer for this.
Those are the three. There's a couple interior.
I see that, I, I see.
That he was saying, suggesting that ought not to be considered as part of, of the open space.
That's the sewer letter.
To be given to the, to be deeded to the town, sorry.
Yeah, so if, if the general consensus is that that's an appropriate way to go, Bob can reference that on the plan, and then I'll, in turn, reference that in the decision.
Hold your thought for a second. Also, at the meeting December 19th, 2017, the Sewer Board, Bill and Tua Commissioners voted to approve Bear Hill Village Sewer Review pending the changes are done to the pump station to meet our requirements, and they use ductile iron pipes from manhole to manhole where depths are more than 10 feet. So, I also have a letter from the sewer.
Those are just copies, yeah.
Yeah, I know. I don't think anyone specifically wants a copy, but.
I didn't figure they would, but just in case.
Just for the record.
Yep.
So, is the board in agreeance in terms of designated the three, green, pink, and yellow?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
There you go. Okay.
So, what about the, um.
In terms of looking for the overview for Rosenfeld Park, so that detailed work could be easily drawn in, so to speak, on the, on the overview map, rather than designated site plan, where everything is.
Yeah, I think it would be, I think it would be better, there'd be less chance of, of people misinterpreting something that's written, as opposed to having it on a plan, so.
No, I don't disagree.
I think that should go in as part of the decision, I think would make it easier for everybody.
And that we have consensus on that as well?
Yeah.
I agree. So, the other question I had, and it's in the draft decision, that's why I had done a, a draft and distributed it by email, and it's in your packet as a hard copy, in terms of what was happening with, it seemed like the improvements on Beaver Street were pretty well tied down in reference to the plan that Bob had updated, and it's referenced in this draft decision. But what wasn't finalized, or at least if it was, I missed it, what the actual decision was, or what the consensus was with handling stop signs at, um, at the four-way, at Maple, Casey, and Beaver Street. So, the, the one proposal was to leave Beaver Street, the through street, and keep Maple a stop, and make Casey approaching from the west a stop.
Right.
The recommendation, yeah, one of the recommendations in the developer's, um, traffic study was to make it an always, an always stop, which, which solves several different problems. And the initial one, which is kind of already solved with the easement that was purchased for line of sight, but that was one of the issues, the other was just in terms of controlling the traffic.
I think they're trying to control the traffic and the speed.
Yep.
Specifically, now that it's gonna be widened, I think it's, I think it's gonna be in the best interest to make that a four-way stop, rather than a continued as it is now.
Makes more sense to do that.
Again, one of my concerns is, when you widen the road, although it might be wonderful for the, for the flow of traffic, it may also just encourage higher speeds.
Yeah.
So, if there's an attempt to slow it down, again, we're not on the enforcement board, but I, I don't think it is the worst thing imaginable making that intersection a four-way.
I agree.
Considering that many of them are coming in, using it as a cut-through.
Right.
From, from the greater Bellingham, Hartford Ave, so.
And I had tried to add some language that, that would include the advanced warning signs.
Stop ahead.
Yeah, because you, you do the stop sign, and then there's a, either an all-way or four-way placard that goes underneath the sign, and then so many hundred feet, or whatever, down the road, it depends on the road, you do a stop-ahead sign. And they're all in the uniform traffic, Control Device Handbook, so that's how you.
Is that something that we need to run by Scott, Chris Fuli? As the highway surveyor? No?
Well, he would, he and, he and Mike Dean would be involved in placement of the advance.
Yep.
You know, because it depends on the vertical and horizontal curves, vegetation, all kinds of stuff, so. All right.
So, is the added to do a four-way?
Yep.
Yes, Joe?
I'm not sure I have a preference, either way. I mean, it's, 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 probably, probably better to put it up and then see what happens.
I'd rather do a four-way, if it doesn't work, you can take two, you can take two stop signs down, it's not the end of the world.
Yeah.
But, again, in an attempt, knowing that the road will be widened, I think if you try to, if you try to contain the, the, the speed of traffic, that this is the best course.
That's the way to do it.
Well, it's the best attempt.
Is there anything else in there that we ought to clarify?
Any other subject, Larry?
I need to read it.
Nope, I think that's it. So, I would recommend you.
Now, I have a request for grant of extension for the.
Public name, you want to. For the PRD and the suburbs.
Yeah.
What happened?
Well, you know what? No, because if it's gonna be continued, I can ask, but.
If you're here, there may not be your thanks, one if they want to say something.
Seeing that this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that has a, yes, sir?
His name?
Are they gonna?
Your name, your name and address, again, I know.
Ronald James, 110.
No, sure.
When they, before they start building the house, they gonna widen Beaver Street?
Before they build? Not necessarily, before they start building.
I don't, I think it's, I think it's gonna be coinciding when they actually put in Casey Drive Extension, if you will, because that's when all the roadwork is going to be done. Obviously, I don't expect that they're gonna be doing it this winter, right now, but.
No, no. They, they were supposed to put the main road in to come out on Beaver Street first, right?
That is phase one.
That's phase one.
Of their development. The off-site.
Beaver Street next, but they're gonna start building, telling you it's the off of it.
Already built.
It really hasn't been discussed.
Part of the, part of the timing on the Beaver Street improvements has to do with highway surveyor's schedule for improvements, because the, the level of improvements is getting divvied up between the developer and the town, because he, the highway surveyor had already planned to make improvements there at some point, so we gotta correlate those schedules.
It'd be nice for them to fix that road first.
So, we'll, we'll address that in the decision, but in theory, it's entirely possible that they could start building houses in the development. Whether they could occupy them or not's another whole story, and that's even true with Casey Drive. So, Casey Drive needs to be done to the first coat, to the first layer, all the way through, before they, they get any occupancy permits for anything. And it needs to be all the way through to gravel base before they get any building permits. So, I'm thinking that depending upon what the surveyor, highway surveyor's schedule is, that'll be incorporated into that kind of a timing approach.
Well, the board knows the width of Beaver Street, and even when you start building the road, they increase the traffic with, with the big trucks.
None of, none of the.
No, all of.
Equipment are gonna come through Beaver Street. They're all gonna come through the, the existing development, through the Casey Drive Extension. He's gonna start where, at his own development, where Casey Drive ends now, and extend it towards Beaver Street. That way, he's not gonna start from Beaver Street and work his way back.
Right.
He's gonna work from the, from the existing development.
Interior.
Beaver Street. So, every, all the equipment and all the construction is gonna happen interior, so it's not gonna come through, not gonna come down Beaver Street.
That's great.
Well, I, I think some of the trucks will, just to get down to, to that end, the Casey Street. Then if you're gonna go down Beaver, almost all the way to Roland.
There won't be.
Take a right.
Why would they do that?
These are his own trucks.
They're gonna be coming from the development.
What if they're coming from 495, or the Hollis, and, and, and.
Most, most of the, he, most of it's gonna be coming from his development. He's got so much material stockpiled within the development, already. He's just waiting.
He might be referring to the pipe trucks, Bob. He might be referring to pipe trucks, asphalt trucks, things like that.
I don't, I don't.
But I don't, I still, the way they've been doing it now, you, you really haven't seen them coming in around Beaver Street. I mean, to suggest that they can't, you're right, they can go in through Roland and come in that way, I mean, it's possible, but I think the bulk of his construction's gonna be interior, and it's gonna be his own equipment, so, until he starts getting supplies, more of the water pipe, sewer, uh, water pipe, pipe, you know, sewer pipe, things like that.
And even those will probably come down Maple, and then turn down, down Beaver, so it's not gonna be in that first stretch.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think you're gonna see much in this stretch. This stretch, this stretch you may see.
First stretch from central to, to Maple, you're not gonna see anything going there, because it really just isn't.
I think on the Bellingham side, you'll see, you'd, you'd probably would see more.
But obviously, there's gonna be truck traffic on.
All the roads are public roads, I can't control where the trucks are going.
Well, that's why I asked, they wanna have Beaver Street wide, and maybe you can walk all day.
Well, as we, and, and I agree with what you're saying, but we can also see if anyone agrees that trucks are utilizing Beaver Street now, and the road isn't widened, so.
Yep. Once he starts, the trucks are gonna improve. You know, that's my old, you know, when, when are they planning on widening Beaver Street?
Well, as Larry said, the, the town, the highway surveyor has a schedule. He's already had it in place to widen Beaver Street and correct some of the problems, and now.
I haven't got to him yet.
Either the developer or going to work together, so there is, there is a schedule when that has to take place, and it, you know, we're gonna work with them on that.
And my second question, when you come out of the Casey Drive, and they were talking about putting up a sign, no, no left turn?
Yeah, that's not gonna happen now. We're gonna have, now we're talking about having a four-way stop on there.
And with a four-way stop, the town will be able to put up other directional signs that encourage people, if they're headed north, to go around Maple Street, not to take a left and, and go up Beaver Street.
A lot of people seem to think that if you come off Casey, you're gonna go up Maple to get downtown on 495.
Yes, and then we'll have signs there directing, well, that's because you can't get there from here right now. That's what the signage is gonna do with a four-way stop.
Look at stop, hold it. You can put signs so the cows come home. We can all agree. People are gonna do what people are going to do. Let's be frank, I, I mean, I, I watch people that says, "Do not take a left," and I watch them do it all the time. When they get hung up on the curb, is it my fault, because the sign said, "Don't take a left," or is it your fault, because you took the left? When they cause accidents and so on and so forth, a lot of it has to do with, they're not paying attention, and they're doing whatever they want. I agree with what you're saying, but there's nothing we can do, and that's, and that's the honest-to-god truth. I'd rather tell you the truth than, than.
They're always putting up a sign. I mean, if there's.
Yeah, I can put up a sign to the.
Well, then it's somebody else's issue.
I can continually put up signs, and then the signs do not get adhered to, and then the signs eventually come down, because no one's adhering to them. Again, I think a four-way stop is your best benefit, trying to control and mitigate some of the speed of the cars coming up and down the widened road. Is it gonna prevent speeding? Absolutely not.
But even.
Do we do the best we can to try to mitigate it? That's what we're here to try to do, mitigate it, but I can't, I don't drive everyone's car, I can only drive my own, so.
But the developer's own traffic study suggested the four-way stop and the directional signage to encourage people to go around Maple Street instead of cutting through your neighborhood. Makes perfect sense to do that. The, the reason it's probably more likely to work after Dominic builds the development than it is right now is because, number one, there's no four-way stop there now, and number two, there are no signs there now to tell anybody that might otherwise not know, that that going north on Beaver Street ain't necessarily the best way to go. So, when it's done, you'll be able to see that, that you're more likely to get the traffic to go around on the better roadway, and not up Beaver Street past your house. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I have a request from the applicant. Okay, I have a request from the applicant for both the special permit and the definitive site plan that, requesting a grant of extension to January 16th, 2018, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to.
Motion by John, seconded by Lena, having, there is no additional discussion, all in favor, opposed unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, Bob, thanks.
We have a discussion item for a possible zoning amendment, self-serve gas stations. Looks like Mr. Consigli, Dave Consigli.
Good night, Bob.
What capacity, Mr. Consigli, are you here tonight? I don't know if you're here. As Realtor extraordinaire, as Realtor extraordinaire, as a private citizen, as the chairman of the zoning board, just, just trying to identify.
A private citizen and as a result of many phone calls from town meeting members and others through the community, asking either for some discussion or clarification on this, this has been happening probably for the past couple of years, and in some of the research that I've done.
He's just talking generically.
Some of the research I've done individually, in addition to speaking with the fire chief and the assistant fire chief, the town in Milford does not have a single station that has a fire suppression system at all. So when we see clips on Facebook and TV of fires that get created in self-serve gas stations, there's an automatic fire suppression system that comes down, puts the fire out. Even if the nozzle gets released out of the tank, it gets triggered. They've got surveillance cameras, they've got certain requirements, fires, the state fire marshal has set guidelines on this going back to 2015, I know this has been a pet peeve for a long time in this town for full service, and it's been well over twenty-some odd years. So as I started divulging into this a little bit, it got kind of scary to realize that there isn't a station in this community that has any fire suppression systems, although one or two of the latest ones that were maybe developed eight, ten years ago have prepped for it down near 495 and 109, however, there's no fire suppression system in them. The biggest concern I think people had back twenty years ago was the availability of handicap accessibility, the elderly, and making sure that, you know, that was a big issue. Well, today, you know, with technology, the way it's been, it's developed over the past twenty years, we're probably one of the only communities that, that don't have it, and I, and I'm fine with that, however, I'm bringing this up for discussion in the event that the board or the public would like to have a discussion about this. It came to a point where I got a couple of calls after the last town meeting, and they were kind of pushing for a, you know, an article, maybe a citizens' article, so I said, "Well, before that happens, maybe we ought to bring it in front of the town officials, and take a look at it and see if it's something that's worth discussing, and maybe what's something for this community to consider." So, saying that, that's the only reason I'm here, I thought it was quite frightening to find out that, that the capabilities and the disadvantages we have right now, if something happens, could be a pretty bad tragedy to happen, and God forbid something does happen, and I was not aware through all these years that there wasn't any type of fire suppression system on any of these stations, which is frankly.
It's scary.
Worries them, so that, that's the only reason I brought it to the attention, and again, this was brought to me a few times, quite a few times, and including even some of the other companies that are in the market over the past, I don't know, two or three years, I've always received plenty of calls, and no one will come into this community to do any type of redevelopment of any stations unless there's some form of self-service in there. And as you can see what they did with the Cumberland Farms, although it's a large store.
Oh, it is.
It came out nice, it's got the proper security, it's got the proper fire suppression systems, my nerves, my nerves are shot just based on looking at some of the older stations and where a possible accident could happen, and that's basically, you know, the nuts and bolts of the entire.
Dave, thank you, and let me just stop you for a second, I can certainly appreciate it, and to be frank with you, other than Milford, I, like you've already identified, I don't think, I, I think you're hard-pressed to find anywhere that, that's going to pump your gas, so I mean, I certainly am very accustomed to pumping my own gas, I'm not nearly as alarmed as you are, because that's the benefit of having a attendant, that it mitigates the risk of a unfamiliar person to pump fuel, that's why this fire suppression is on, is scary to me, as a, perhaps are to you. One of the, one of the problems I always have, self-serve, is inevitably someone goes to get fuel, shuts their car off, runs in the store and buys whatever the heck they're else they're doing, and you're there forever. It's, self-serve is not nearly as efficient as the theory thinks it should be, because there's a lot of unmanned vehicles.
There's pros and cons to both.
There certainly is, and, and you know what, Dave? When it was zero, yes, I stayed in Milford, and yes, that poor guy came out and pumped my gas, because I wasn't going to do it. There are benefits to it, however, like I said, I don't think it's nearly as scary, like I said, statistically speaking, when we look at the potential for spills and so on and so forth, or the fire suppression, but like I said, one of the bigger gripes about it is the inefficiency of, of monitoring people who are getting out of their car and leaving their car, whether it be running or not running, unattended, and causing some overflow. Now, the concept of, of self-serve, really, like I said, does not offend me at all, but when we start looking at some of these very small gas stations in and around town.
Well, I don't think they, based on this, I don't think they'd be able to go self-serve.
I'm just saying, though, when we look at some of these, but, but there's an argument why they shouldn't, if you have unattended vehicles, you will be flowing into having traffic, which is a bigger problem to me than not having self-serve, so.
Just so you know, the attendant gas stations have a lot of spillage.
I'm sure everyone has a lot of spillage, the unattended does too.
There's an environmental situation, it did happen recently, within the past six or eight months, and it was strictly a attended gas station, and it leaked three feet into the ground, because they don't have the proper spillways of concrete and the line systems that the new stations have. And again, there's going to be pros and cons to all of this, I just wanted to bring it up to the board, if you want to do something, that's fine, if you don't, that's fine, but I think at least to take a discussion on it and see what you think.
My, my question would be, what would be the cost for the gas station owners to do, to make their gas station accessible to the new, to the new way of pumping, pumping gas?
Standard, standard six, six, sick, well, two or three, well, for instance, like the gas go down in Upton, not in Upton, the one that was just done over there, you know, those type of station sizes, you know, they're, they're going to be putting in $900,000 into these, into these systems.
Those are all brand-new, what, how, how does they?
You cannot go to a self-serve station currently, right now, if a bylaw was passed, they could not go self-serve. Totally updating.
That's what I was asking, you know, would, are they going to pay the cost to up, update?
They would have to.
They would have to, they would have no choice.
The reason I'd suggested Dave come in now as a discussion item is to, is to broach the subject and see if you'd be interested in discussing it at greater length, either next meeting or the following meeting, in terms of a schedule.
Just be quiet for one second. No, seriously, because, I, I think the question, Dave, because I'm getting the sense that you're not exactly telling us the entire picture, so I'm going to be very blank, I'm going to be very, hold on, I'm going to be very blunt about this, are you looking for this board to do it, or is there an applicant, or a private citizen, or? Fuel station, or somebody who wants to do this?
No, 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 actually, actually, no, there is not a fuel station that's looking to come into the community, there is a few citizens that talked about doing a citizen petition, and this has been going on for the last couple of years, I'm only bringing it in front of this board to see if that's something that the board wants to discuss from a public standpoint.
Well, I've heard rumblings on, from the other side as well, but I've also heard rumblings, and, and I don't mind telling you, it, it came from, I believe it's going to be the Valerio that's down 85.
Or the new station that was.
So, I, I, I'm trying to figure out if, if it behooves this board to try to tackle it, or do you wait and see if there's applicants out there that are going to do it on their own, that's, this is what, you know, there's pros and cons.
But, but they can't do it, they're not, nobody's going to spend the money to do it on their own, because they can't do it.
No one has to do it, right?
They can't, they can't have full service right now, it's all, it's all of, I mean.
Everything right now is full, they can't have.
They can't have self-service now, so.
The last time this came in front of us, Larry? It was by Brian Murray, I can tell you, because I was here, it was by Brian Murray, and it was a group of fuel stations that paid him to represent, so, again, I, I'm fully apprised of what we have now, like I said, I'm just trying to understand.
But he paid him not, not to have self-serve.
No, there's no individual company right now.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I mean, trust me when I tell you, have I, have I got the calls over the past two or three years from companies? Absolutely, would they come into the community? Absolutely not.
I think one of the things.
Only because of self, because it's not.
I think one of the things you're going to have to do, David, to be honest, my recollection through all of these, through the number of times it's come forward, and, and to be honest, I wouldn't have an issue with taking it before town meeting, because I think it's their decision to make at the end of the day, and maybe we want to have, maybe it's time for that again, we've got a few of them, maybe it's time again, but I think you really need to get, or whether it's this board or whether it's you coming forward, we're going to need to get something from the fire chief, I know you said you talked to him, but I think we, we need some sort of direction from him, because I, my recollection from the last time was that the fire chief wasn't totally on board, at least that wasn't quite clear at the time of the town meeting, and I think that's, that's what's going to be needed if it has any chance of passing.
Yeah, he actually had sent over an email, I think I followed it to you this afternoon, from the fire chief, and, and the email simply indicated, "We will not oppose any self-serve proposals for zoning regulation uses," and he'll send that off.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's what you're going to have to do going forward.
To Ricky as well, because, because when I got it, I wanted him to send it off, and they said, "Not a problem."
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a town meeting, to me, it's a town meeting decision, it's been a long time since we've done it, and, and we can put it to bed again, or it can, or it can pass, but I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have an issue with it going forward, at least giving that.
I get the challenges of both sides.
Yeah, and I think those are both out there, to be totally honest.
Whether in either one way or the other, it's just that I've got approached quite a few times on this, it's consistently coming onto my plate, and in the past, where the development groups, absolutely, recently, over the last year, no, because they know Milford is not, but it has come across my plate many times.
What I had put in the agenda for this item is something that I had developed, and, and Dave and I had talked about it, given the structure of our bylaw, it makes it much easier to address this issue, that if town meeting were of a mind to pass something, it's, it's much easier to get all kinds of approvals and restrictions and special permit processes on the books, so that they don't just wander in and all they have to do is get a site plan approved, they're going to have to meet a whole bunch of standards, and part of those is what I was trying to get at with the footnote in the draft that I had.
Yeah, that's, I, I, to be honest with me, part of what I would like to hear before I made a recommendation to town meeting was, was certainly the input from those gas station owners that have a single.
Right.
Have a single island, and how, and whether they feel this is going to put them out of business or not, because certainly the intent isn't, isn't to do that, so I'd like to hear from them.
Know what it's going to do.
It's going to cause them to be redeveloped, I would assume.
It's going to cost them to redevelop, but it's not going to be big enough for the redevelopment, so then they're going to try and go.
Close it down.
Then they're going to try and do what Cumberland Farm did over in Hopeville.
Yeah.
Buy a few pieces of property and do a.
Yeah, but for certain guys, I, yeah.
That's the only way it's going to work.
Yeah, certain guys, I don't know if that's going to happen, and, and, I mean, maybe their livelihood, so I'd certainly like to hear their input before I made any decision, but, but I think those are the types of things we would need to do to go forward.
Absolutely, those all have to get out on the table, I just wanted to bring it in front of the board, and we can take it from there.
You know, it's their livelihood, so that's another thing, you know, that, that's, that's an important.
It's an expensive.
Larry, why don't you put this on the agenda sometime, let's do it beginning of March.
Well, just be mindful of the schedule if there's an interest of anybody to get on the annual town meeting.
It's, it's been twenty years, if it's twenty and a half years or twenty-one, I don't think it's going to matter, I'm sorry if I'm wrong, please speak up.
I'm not going to rush this, I don't want to rush.
It was twenty years ago, I remember this.
Oh.
Maybe, maybe it was eighteen, maybe it was sixteen.
It's, it's part of that, Larry, I think what, what you may want to do, and why March may be appropriate, is, is we probably should send out notice to, to all the station owners in town, so that they know that this is coming up, give them some time.
Absolutely.
Make preparations to do it.
I'd like to get input from the fire chief.
And I definitely need that.
You know, let's, let's get some input, if you're going to do this, you want to consider it.
Do it right.
Let's consider it correctly, let's not rush it, because again, it's been well over a decade, and I don't know if it's been twenty, but it's been well over a decade.
It's twenty.
Oh, well over twenty, I mean.
You think I remember.
Trotter down here, I mean, really?
Oh, please, Dave, you were sleeping that day, thank you, sir, for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we have a ZBA referral for Rob Sham Village EM Street LLC, Larry?
Yep.
I, I know I saw your letter, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I drafted that on behalf of the board.
We've all seen his letter.
Yeah, the ZBA was, had asked previously for input, the last written input we'd given to anybody was back during the site approval stage, and the ZBA wasn't directly involved, so this was kind of re-upping those issues, trying to, you know, emphasize the things that are still outstanding, which are basically most of the things that we said in the first place, there hasn't been much interest, it doesn't appear, from the developer to, to try to address any of those, so that's why they're still on the list, but nonetheless, I drafted that for Pat's signature, subject to, subject to the board making corrections or additions.
Yeah, I'd gone through your letter.
I, I think your letter is accurate and to the point and well-written, so I don't, I don't have any objections to your letter. Anyone?
No, it's fine.
So you need me to, do you need a motion, so I can sign the letter, Larry?
Yeah.
I'll take a motion to sign a letter, motion by Joe, seconded by Lena, any further discussion on the motion, if there are not, all in favor of me signing the letter, opposed unanimous, did you sign this one, or did you have a?
I'll get the original, I, I don't seem to have it right here.
Oh, you want to do number five for me?
ZBA special permit referral for lot 12 Industrial Road, Connor Brook LLC, this is from Larry's letter.
If you can find Larry's letter.
Which one is that?
Number five.
Five.
Yeah, that.
Hold on a second.
We don't have five.
We don't have five. We have four.
I can't find it.
That's why you can't find it.
We got a six.
Hold on, you know what, then, Larry?
Why don't we do six and then back to five?
Let me go, let me do six, and we'll come back to five. We have a ZBA variance special permit referral for 25 Taylor Street By Homes LLC, the applicant requests a variance special permit to construct a two-family dwelling on the subject property, the lot is 11,628 square foot in area, 372 square foot, less than the minimum, 12,000 square foot, required in the RA zone, to request a special permit to construct a two-family dwelling via special permit, hence the variance request.
Thanks.
The proposed two-family dwelling is arranged to provide a common entrance, as well as to provide six pavoff street parking spaces on the northeast portion of the lot, the proposed two-family dwelling complies with all yard requirements, and two trees are proposed for the front yard, all other standards of section 3.13 special permit standards, two-family dwellings on the zoning bylaw appear to be met, therefore, Larry's recommend a favorable to the ZBA. What's there now, anything?
That was the house that had burned and got rebuilt illegally a few times.
Oh, then, no, okay.
Oh, I know that house.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, no.
Finally getting it done right.
Oh, no, only if they get a ZBA permit, okay.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Nothing there now.
There's nothing there now?
No, it's gone.
Everything's gone?
Yep.
So basically, it's a single-family lot.
Nothing is there.
Right, that, right now, they, they need a, a variance for the, what is it, 300-some square.
square feet, so that they can get the 12,000...
What's the pleasure of the board?
They're building a two-family?
Yes.
Yes, that's what they're trying to do.
Side by side.
Side by each. Two stories, side by each.
Side by each.
It meets the requirements, if they get the variance.
Well, it really doesn't meet the requirements.
If, if they get the variance.
No, it doesn't.
No, I'm sorry, but I was on that duplex, and I don't feel compelled to go with this, because it was very specific. Just saying. We're more sensitive.
Give it to one, you've got to give it to another one.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I...
It wasn't a duplex before, it was a single-family house.
No, it was, well...
We don't know what it was, because it was so illegally...
Yes, there were so many illegal...
It should have been a single-family Joe, but God knows what they, how the heck they... So as far as I'm concerned, and I don't mind telling you, it should go back to a single-family.
Well, I would assume the card upstairs said, "Single family," which is a critical thing, so...
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, the, yeah, buy your house, so please, all the hours a hacker.
Well, effectively, they're also going to, they're going to front it towards the driveway in order to do this, is the way I'm looking at this too.
Well, regrettably, I just don't prefer to, me, myself and I, don't prefer to deviate from what the, the work of the, of what the bylaw reads in terms of duplexes.
Up to 16,000 square feet is the bylaw.
No, no, I know, Lena, that's why I said, I don't, I'm not deviating from that.
Me neither.
What's the pleasure of the board?
If you give it to one, you have to give it to someone else.
I'm with you kid. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, we send an unfavorable recommendation to the ZBA.
Motion by Joe for an unfavorable. Do I have a second for an unfavorable? Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing not. All in favor of the unfavorable? Opposed to the unfavorable? Four for the unfavorable. May I have your letter Joe?
There's only four of us, so four.
Yeah, I'm sorry kid. Oh, that's okay. I'm with you.
Gender item five. Connor Brook LLC, Lot 12 Industrial Road, from Larry's letter. The applicant requests special permit to conduct earth removal activities on the subject property, as per Section 3.7 of the zoning bylaw. Subsection 3.7.2 requires that the following shall be submitted with the application and shall become conditions of the special permit. A plan showing existing grades in the removal area and in surrounding areas in the proposed finished grade, satisfactory performance bond, and written agreement has been executed specifying compliance with all provisions of this bylaw and with such additional conditions as the Board of Appeals may require. Since none of the aforementioned has been submitted, I recommend that the applicant continue this application until the February zoning Board of Appeals meeting to allow sufficient time for the requirements to be met. We have sections of the bylaw that Larry was referencing in the packet, and you also have the request that was put in by Connor Brook LLC. I don't think there's any additional information other than what's on here. I mean, you know, we're, effectively Larry's asking for an existing grade in what they want to get, what the removals need to be, or what they're looking for as part of the removal activity, and then they need to post the bond.
Yeah, none of that was submitted, so I don't know.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah. Why wouldn't preserve my laws? You can sign those, right? Do it tomorrow?
Yeah, why couldn't I?
Well, you could, but you need a...
So you're effectively, we, we would, if we follow your letter, we would be asking that the applicant at the zoning hearing, or that the zoning board asks them to continue, effectively?
Yeah, or deny.
Or otherwise, we deny, you know, based on...
Yeah, I was just...
I, I guess my, you know, recommendation to the zoning board would be that you either deny it if they don't get that, or that you ask for a continuance.
Right.
Because based on the information you have, we don't believe that they can adequately act on the, on the request.
Yeah, on, on its face, it's, it's an incomplete application.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Suggest the zoning board ask for a continuance.
There's a motion to make a recommendation to the zoning board that they ask for a continuance until such time as the, the required material is submitted.
Correct.
Until such time as the, the material, required material is submitted. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing not, and all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at three.
And we have the my laws finally for the Whitewood Preserve PRD. Do you want to get a motion to sign, or maybe stop by some other time?
I have a motion to sign the my laws for Whitewood Preserve.
I'll...
Motion. Motion by Lena, seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing not. All opposed? Excuse me, all in favor, opposed, unanimous?
I gave you my letter. I actually know, I already gave Karen my letter. I just had, I had a couple open items before we adjourned.
I know, I left my coat on, it freezes a whole bunch.
We had all signed those?
No, just me.
Just a couple things that I thought we should discuss going forward. Parking, I, I thought we should take a look at, because of temporary occupancy at Stop and Shop, I, I think we need to set something up in the bylaws, since we've made the change to reduce parking for site plans in, in, in general and conglomerate, but then we don't have, we don't have a way of controlling that if they have a temporary for certain areas. There were some issues down Stop and Shop, I don't know if it was really that bad, or just the fact that there was changes down there or not too. I, I understand that, but the fact is, I don't, I don't think I want to leave it up to the zoning official to make judgments as to what he should give a temporary for or not, depending on the amount of parking that's available, so that we don't get into issues going forward. So I think we need to, we may want to take a look at that, to indicate something like, you know, a temporary permit can't be issued unless there's parking for each one of the specific units that you're giving a temporary for.
Yeah, we can write that into the decisions, which I don't think we did.
I think Joe, what you need to do is you actually, temporary gets linked to the percentage of completed parking. So in other words, if, if you represent 20,000 square feet, and you need, according to the calculations, 100 spots, what we need to actually do is, is link it to, you know, a percentage above and beyond what your requirements are, because when we look at construction fencing and, and so on and so forth, that's how we have to do it.
And also the physical location, the proximity of...
The proximity to where the lot is, yeah.
To the use it's getting, but that's, we can improve the language in the decision to clarify that. But part of that, just in, in fairness to the condition of our drafting, all of that was occurring during a time of...
Transition.
Transition.
I'm, I'm, I don't have, I'm just saying, going forward, we need to, we need to be cognizant of it, just because of what could happen.
Well, let, let me be honest with you, and I don't mind, we might as well use reliance health, given an occupancy, and that front entrance across the mobile gas station still wasn't correct. Okay, but yet they got...
That's right.
And they shouldn't have.
Yep.
Because cars are still coming down and trying to take a left when they shouldn't. And by the way Larry, can you do me a favor while we're on this subject? I know as you're coming down 16, heading towards Beaver Street, I know right before McDonald's is a no-left turn. For some odd reason, people are not seeing that. I know that they built an island there. Could you have the building department get ahold of the applicant and have them right there at that island, put no-left turn, or do not enter, or something, because I still see cars getting hung up on that island?
Trying to get in.
And again, I can see right, right before McDonald's, it says no-left turn, but I get, either they can't see it, or...
They don't care.
They don't care, I don't know.
They want to turn left.
I think it's because they want to turn left, but could you please just have them put up another no-left turn, do not enter, something, so that...
That's why Kohl's tightened it all up, so they wouldn't take a left turn.
And again, it's, it's, it's not from lack of trying, you can't help what people are going to do.
I know it, I know it.
The other one on parking was, at some point, we may want to take a look at, at the, the bylaw again, and this, this again is, part of it came out of Robcham's, in terms of electric cars, it had me thinking. The other thing that, that had me thinking is, there's been a preponderance of, of restaurants that now do takeout, that, you know, we do a seat calculation, and then all of a sudden they're doing takeout, and they're taking, they put up signs that say, "Okay, my takeout is these spaces," which are part of the calculation. I'm not saying that we necessarily have a problem, but I think we need to address it going forward in terms of how we want to handle those types of things.
Well, if they haven't gotten a site plan approved that includes takeout, they may not have enough off-street parking, because the takeout area is one space for every 50 square feet of floor area, not one to 100 or whatever, one to so many seats.
Well, I think there's a lot of places...
And that's why we did it that way.
I think there's a lot of places that have probably put up takeout that have not got it permitted.
Started doing it after...
Well, I think, God, that there's one right there, unfortunately, there's nothing, you know, Stop and Shop left, so...
Yeah.
But they have electric car, takeout, and everything else.
Right.
Now granted, they have a sea of asphalt over there, I don't think it's an issue today.
No, I don't, no, it's not an issue again.
But to your point, Appleby's, which we gave that development, parking reduction, and it was never calculated that they were going to do reserved spots specifically to curbside.
Yeah.
So, you're right, you can't have it both ways.
But I, I think, and again, I'm not, I'm not saying anybody right now necessarily has an issue or not, they may be fine, depending on, on how we want to go forward, but I think, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing this thing with electric cars, there could be charging areas, I, I think it would be better for us to get on the front end of it and say, "If you're going to have these, how do, how do we treat that in terms of a parking space? Do we count it as one? Do we not count it as one? Do we count it as a partial one?" I just think we may want to have a discussion going forward, so I, you know, it would be good to just get some...
To that point, you should...
Some past information.
To that point, then thank you. You should probably send the superintendent of schools, specific to Woodland, because they have reserve spots for electric cars that were not on the site plan. And to me, okay, and they also have commuter parking, not really sure what metropolis they're trying to collect from, but I've gone through there, and to me, they were tight on parking to begin with?
Oh, yeah.
And this, and to have set aside, I guarantee you, it's about a dozen, is not in the best interest. Now, my suspicion is that they probably received a credit from the master school building for specific green initiatives.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So, that's my thinking, however...
Yeah, the space is not used, it does nobody any good.
It, it doesn't do anyone any good, so, you know, now that they cashed the check,